We'll call this meeting to order for the City Council, or Lindsey, if you like it. We had a work session earlier, and I will have the prayer by Hunter Watson and the pledge by Councilwoman Carter. We'll come up to the mic.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank that we could be here today. Please bless that we can take off, and we can solve the problems of Payson City and we can try to fix them. Please bless that. It will be a good night, and we say this thing is in the name of Christ, amen.
Will you all rise and repeat after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Hunter. Thanks, Lyndon. Okay, now we'll look for motion for the approval of the consent agenda, which includes approval of June 21st, 2017 council meeting minutes, and the ordinance amendments to the Payson City Code Title 23 and Stormwater Ordinance. Mayor Protim, I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as outlined. Got a motion by Councilman Harding.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Welton on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Posp. None. Motion carries. Okay, now we have the public forum. That's for anybody in the public that would like to get up and discuss anything that is not on the agenda, and if you do choose to, please limit it to three minutes, if you will. Seeing none, we'll close the public forum. Council and staff, report, staff.
Mayor Protim and council, just want to give you an update on our water. With the hot temperatures we've had and no rain pretty much since at least May, we're using a lot of water and the residents are just watering like crazy. We're barely keeping up. The lower pond was less than half full this morning, so we've upped our allotment, but you know, we put out a message on Facebook and on the dialer to let everyone know to kind of make sure you're watering on your days and times. There's not a lot I can do about it other than, you know, we try to go, we try to tell people when we see them, but a lot of people water at night, and there's not much I can do about that. But we've, you know, we've talked with Tracy and Carl, trying to, at least on the bigger users, water during the day, even though it's a lot less efficient, just because it does affect our pressure. We've got a ton of complaints from residents not being able to water, so we're trying to do what we can, but just if you guys get calls, that's what we're doing, but it's hard to police 5,500 people, and we've got five guys in the water department, so.
Are we certain that it's just people watering their own time? Is there a reason behind it?
There is another issue, and I'll just bring it up real quick. We don't filter spring-like water, and I know Travis and Ren are looking into it, because it kind of sucks the twigs and debris into the line. The Highline Canal water is pretty clean, but not stuff that comes out of. Yeah, I mean, the ultimate problem is when the system was designed in 1990, it was built for 9,000 people, and it now has 20,000 people on it. And so the newer system, you know, had some bigger lines, but we have a lot of four-inch lines all through the older area, and that, along with all the usage, just kills us, so.
It'd maybe good to put out a note for people to clean their filters. I had a guy in my neighborhood who was shooting me out at a monthly visit to his house, and I asked him to clean his filters, that, "Do I have a filter?" And we went and dug around and found his filter and cleaned it out for him, and his water pressure went up immediately.
One of the problems we've noticed, too, is we unfortunately told the residents that they could water all they wanted, pretty much with this high water runoff, well, they didn't hear the message that said, "Shut it off," and they are still doing it, so.
Yeah.
I think in the future, we shouldn't ever encourage them to just let it go, because then they don't shut it back off.
Mayor Protim, City Council, this is the public. We just finished up June, so I'll give you the numbers that we had at the end of June. We had 120 arrests, resulted in 150, or excuse me, 257 offenses, 240 citations that resulted in 306 violations, 1,108 crime reports, four DUIs, 468 traffic stops, and 26 traffic accidents. So, staying pretty busy with a few things this year. I just wanted to mention the Scottish Festival is this weekend. If you guys know that or not, they've asked us to help a little bit, Police Department keep an eye on it, but we'll have a few officers there over the weekend, and we invite everybody to come out and visit, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Tracy?
Phil?
Councilman Harding? Yeah. I have a couple items. First is Shop Local. The event will be this weekend, at the same time as the Scottish Festival, which I guess is unfortunate, but it starts at 10:00, we'll run to 2:00, and it'll be over at Payson Market. So encourage any in the public to come over there and visit with representatives of our local businesses and see what we do here in Payson, and they usually have some kind of food in the draw, so I'd make sure you come to that. Payson Interfaith Council met about a week ago, and we had a discussion with regard to the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, which is the next big event for them, and that will be on the Saturday of our celebration, and it'll be in the park, so look forward to doing that. Last item I have is kind of an item of personal privilege, I'm going to put on a hat here. This was a hat that my dad got out of the Veterans Home. Some of you may know that my father passed away this last weekend, and he was a resident of that Veterans Home. I wanted to thank them for the excellent job that they did in treating him. We had, about a week and a half ago, we had the car show that was out there, and I took him out to the car show, and on the way out, I had at least 25 of the staff call him by name, which I found outstanding, that that many people knew his name. They gave him great care. That Veterans Home was a joint effort on part of the City Council, the Mayor, the Payson Planning Commission, who all did heroic things to get things put together and make sure that we got that facility, and that's what I think we can do here in Payson when we work together, is provide that kind of opportunity. So, just wanted to thank all those in the city who also took the time to thank, to wish me condolences for what happened. So that's all I'll add. Thank you. Councilman Welton?
Yes. A couple items. First of all, I'm excited for the Scottish Festival. It's always a great event. I think if it's advertised properly, and Shop Local is a city event, we can put it on our marquee maybe, and say, "Hey, while you're at the Scottish Festival, stop by here." I think you'll actually get a lot of people, and it's a good two-for-one event, and I think we should try to maximize those events. Thanks to the fire and the police for their work over the holiday weekend. You know, they gotta drive their roads up and down and make sure everybody's safe, and it's a thankless job sometimes, and so we appreciate them. Glad there was nothing serious. Little shout-out to the library. I don't know if you've been to the library lately. I've just been adopted to the library board, and I've been down there several times, and they're doing amazing things. They've really kind of changed around the library a little bit. It's not just a rebook and be quiet, but it's a place to go and hang out, and for kids to have safe areas, and they've got learning activities there. They've got a lot of kids there, and it's a really happening place right now, so they've done a really good job there. I'm glad to be back. I missed the last couple of council meetings, and so I'm glad to be here.
Councilman Carter?
I just want to thank the police department specifically for always being at the places that I see them that need to be monitored a lot. I've noticed that the traffic on 6th East, you still have some that are going way too fast down that road, but as I travel a number of times daily, I notice that the traffic has slowed down a lot, and of course, as you come over the hill, you see the cop car down there. And I appreciate them being out there. Today, as I, on my way, no, it was on my way home from work, I think, I, like I always do, forgot to put on my seatbelt, and I ignored the ding ding ding, until I got to the park and noticed the cop car sitting there. So I immediately put my seatbelt on, rolled down my window and waved. Remember that thing that we talked about doing? Waving, thank you. Waving at Payson citizens and trying to be happy and welcoming, and I waved to him, and I hope he saw that I had my seatbelt on. But I appreciate the police force and all that they do.
Were you wearing kilt?
Pardon?
Were you wearing your kilt?
No, and I'm not going to wear one. I know, but I'll march in something different. In my.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to pretty much reiterate what Lyndon said. We appreciate the police and the job in controlling a lot of the speed that's been quite bad at times. We also, with the July 1st, they've got the new money, so they've been out patching tuck holes finally, so, and they're reconstructing the road out here on the west side, or the east side of the city building, where the police work on the roads. Other than that, that's all I have. Okay. Lynda, Councilman Carter, would you like to do the scout attendance certificate for Hunter Watson? And thanks for saying the prayer for us.
Is it Michael or Hunter?
Yes. Michael Hunter. Michael Hunter Watson.
Oh, Michael Hunter. Okay, Michael.
He goes by Hunter, but his first name's Michael.
Okay. Michael Hunter, would you like to come up here for a minute? We want to present you with this, a certificate, and we appreciate that you came and to counsel, and hope that you can learn something from it. We've asked all of the scouts to stand up here and tell those that are here with us tonight what your favorite thing is about scouting. Say it loud so they can hear.
My favorite thing about scouting is everything that I learn while doing it.
Which is? Name a couple of things for me.
Like all the outdoor stuff that we do and the toughness that prepares me to, like, really, uh...
Good. I was impressed. I heard Councilman Spencer go down in the audience and gave him a choice of whether he wanted to do the prayer or lead the count, lead the pledge of allegiance. How old are you?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. I think if I were 13, I would have easily picked the pledge of allegiance, so I'm proud of you that you did the prayer.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. I want you to go and shake everybody's hand. Yeah, I did.
Okay. Chamber business of the month. You want that stroke struck in from the agenda, or how do you want that?
I'm just gonna skip that.
Table, we'll table that till the next meeting, I guess. Need a motion, or? All right, now we're gonna go to the public hearings. So we're gonna open up the public hearing. I have a motion.
I make a motion that we go into the public hearing and action items.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Carter. Second. Seconded by Councilman Welton. On favor?
Aye.
Posp. Motion carries.
Okay. I have a short presentation, so hopefully it won't confuse everybody, because we've got two plots here that are on separate pieces of property in the same neighborhood. So this is an overview. We've got two plots that we're looking for. The applicant, Michael Watson, is requesting approval of an overlay zone, and approval, preliminary, and final approval of the subdivision. So Plot A is located on the southeast corner of 300 North and 300 East, so it says parcel here. And the applicant is proposing a twin-home structure on this lot, so it'll be two units total, but just one structure, one twin-home structure. So in order to move forward with that request, he must obtain approval from the City Council of the R-1 overlay zone, and preliminary, preliminary plan, and final plot approval of the subdivision. So the use will be a twin-home structure on this one here. Plot B is located across the street on the southwest corner of the intersection. There's an existing home on the parcel, but he is proposing to subdivide that and keep the existing home on one lot, and then subdivide off an additional single-family dwelling lot for new construction. So it is just single-family homes on that flat. So Plot A, they're both located in the R-175 zone. As mentioned, this is just a picture of the site here, just showing the front and chair along 300 North, looking south. They are looking at putting a twin-home structure there. Conditions of the R-1 overlay zone is compatibility with surrounding uses. The applicant has provided you with a list of the exterior materials and the different features that he is willing to incorporate into the design of that to make it compatible and very attractive into the existing neighborhood setting. So there are some design elements that are proposed, off-street parking, two-car. Our requirement is two parking stalls, one of which has to be covered, and the applicant is proposing two-car garages for both of the units. Project landscaping, instead of just the front yard landscaping on all attached housing or multifamily housing, it requires that all, the entire yard, so front, side, rear has to be completed before occupancy. And so he has also provided landscaping standards. Not knowing exactly what the footprint of that structure will be, it'll probably change, so he did put some general guidelines together of what landscaping will be incorporated, but a lot of that's going to depend on the final building on the site, where the driveways are going to be, et cetera. It's required, whereas a twin-home unit and it has zero lot lines, separate ownership on either side, they are required to have separate utilities, and he indicated that on the plans. Project fencing, he is not proposing perimeter fencing, but he is, and he is proposing fencing that will be located on the zero lot line, the division between the two units. And so again, no perimeter part, or fencing proposed, but we'll have a division between the two apartments. So Plot B, oh, so here's Plot A, just showing the final plot, showing that it's here on the southeast corner, showing the division between the two units, Lot 1 and Lot 2.
Do you know what direction do they face?
They will face north.
North?
Yes. So Plot B, as I mentioned, there's an existing home on the parcel, so this is the home that is there. It's still in the same zone, R-175. The conditions for both Plot A and B are very similar, where they're right across the street from one another, that you have to be in compliance with city regulations. The applicant has, and his project surveyor and engineer have been working with staff throughout this entire process to update the project plans, and so a lot of the conditions of approval have already been satisfied. The ones that are remaining are the ones that he cannot move forward on until he receives approval. But separate utilities, as mentioned, both of these parcels are located in Zone B of the FEMA floodplain, and so at the time that either the new single-family home is constructed or the twin-home structure is constructed, they will need to submit a floodplain development permit and submit that information, because it is in the floodplain. And then final plot items, as I mentioned, these typically aren't done until final plot approval's been granted, but that applicant will need to transfer water, submit a performance guarantee, use to guarantee the workmanship of the installation of public improvements in the roadways, pre-construction, and then demolition of structures on Plot B. There are some outbuildings here that will need to be demolished to accommodate a new single-family home and to need setbacks by the new lot line for creative by the new home. Then here's Plot B. So the single-family dwellings on this, so it is just two single-family dwelling homes, one existing, and then one proposed that will be sold off for a single-family dwelling lot. And then, I believe the last slide is, oh, so here are some elevations that the applicant did provide of typical structures that could be built on that lot, where the applicant's not sure if he will be constructing this unit on there, it may just be sold to a potential buyer, and so that's why he was willing to put those design elements in place. So as he is presenting a finished product to you, or explaining what the end product could be, that there's some guarantee that those features will be incorporated regardless of ownership. And then lastly, a decision by the City Council. Before that, the process did go to the planning commission. The planning commission conducted the public hearing. We did have some comment regarding the proposal, but ultimately, the planning commission did recommend approval for the overlay zone, which is needed for the twin home, as well as the preliminary final plot for both Plot A and Plot B of the MWPV subdivision. That is the presentation. Michael Watson is here. We'll let Michael Watson, senior or junior, speak to this anyway, but he may want to address the planning, or the City Council, and answer any questions that you may have in hopes of getting a recommendation or a decision of approval from the City Council tonight. Do you have any questions for staff?
Good evening. My name's Mike Watson. I'm the developer on the Plot A and Plot B of the MWPV subdivisions. Just a couple of things we wanted to share with you. We specialize in infill and urban renewal. We love to do these kinds of projects. We're on the Wansett Front here, and we're areas where these exist for opportunities for improvement. The couple of things I wanted to point out to you is, in preparation for tonight, we went and actually went door-to-door on four to five occasions, and had met with between 20 and 25 neighbors in person, showed them what we wanted to do, talked to them openly about our intent and our plans. We got four concerns back from them, and I wanted to share them with you, because I feel like we have met those concerns compellingly. The first concern was that nobody wanted to see a lot of tenants, so when we expressed that we would have a set of twin homes on Plot A and a single-family residence on Plot B, everybody was pretty excited about that. Everybody was very positive about these two lots being filled in, and kind of concerned the neighborhood, and having some rooftops and structures there were very positively warmly received. They did say they wanted them done right. When we talked to them about the architectural structures and inclusions, everybody was very positive about that. To highlight a couple of those, we are dealing two-car garages, solid surface exteriors with almost a full brick front with brick or stone wainscote down the side and stucco for the remainder, so it'll be no siding, two-car garages, a 612 pit, 25-year-plus architectural shingles, among other things. So about, in all of our time in the neighborhood, we found that probably less than 85% of, or excuse me, about 85% of those, of the homes in the neighborhood do not meet those architectural standards, so those will be an improvement to the neighborhood, and we feel like that will elevate the values, and that these properties on Plot A that will have these architectural inclusions will actually raise the value to be at the top end of sales prices for future values. We also were told that we wanted, they wanted to see a little bit of space in the lots, so Ruth Kleisen, who's here tonight, asked that there be a trampoline, available space for a trampoline, which we felt like there's a trampoline, even if we have to get one of those mini ones from Walmart. Just kidding, Ruth. But we wanted a little bit of yard space. Now that brings us to Plot B. I wanted to let you know, we initially submitted this plot with Plot A having a set of twin homes, and Plot B having a set of twin homes also, requiring an R-1 overlay for both properties. And while the city was great to work with us, we felt like it didn't lay out well on Plot B, so of our own volition, we decided just to put in a single-family residence lot. And so the neighbors were in support, I think, either way, but we felt like it was a better project that way. Our goal was to do lots of projects like this in Payson City, and so we downed, we didn't ask for the R-1 overlay for Plot B, because the lot is more square than rectangular, even though we can make the underlying requirements of the R-1 overlay. The last requirement was, or the thing that the neighbors wanted, was no churches. They wanted any churches there, so we didn't put in a church. I mentioned the architecture, and I think that was a parking issue more than anything. The architectural things have been mentioned, we, and then we had a really warm reception from the planning commission. They were thrilled that we went and took the time to meet with so many of the neighbors. In fact, I had a chance to meet with two of them after, with one of my partners, and they said that they would like to see lots of these in the R-175 and the R-275, or excuse me, the R-175 and R-275 zones, as long as they're done correctly and in conformity with the surrounding area. So, hope you like it, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
This is the public hearing. If anybody would like to give up and say a piece of mind, you're welcome to. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Ruth Kleisen, and I really like these two guys. One of them is a father-in-law to a girl I went to school with and church with, a good friend. Initially, I was for the twin home, but now I don't feel good about it. On that same block, there is a fourplex, and it has been kept up simply because Alan Carter is there, and he keeps it well groomed. He manages it. He doesn't own it. And then there are three condos on the, the fourplex is on the west side of the block. On the east side are three condos, and they were kept up for years until the original people died, and two of them are not well-kept. The one on the south is. And now I'm thinking, if there's twin homes on the north side of the block, and if just one of them doesn't upkeep their home, well, then that's going to be bad. So now I'm not really in favor of the twin homes because of the multiple housings. So there's four, and three more is seven, and two more makes nine, that are multiple houses. And so they look nice, but I think that's something to consider, that many multiple houses on that same block. And not too far away are the two eightplexes, and so, and then on that block, there's also a twin home with the eightplexes, plus the apartments that used to have five, but I think there's four. But I am concerned about the twin home now, because of how many units of multiples will be on that block. So I wish you'd consider that. I'm disappointed in what's happened with the condos, and so, that's that. Thank you.
The twin homes are being sold?
Yes. Yeah, and the building she referenced on the east side, or on the east side, is actually a triplex. Those are not owner-occupied. Ours will be owner-occupied, and they're single-family residences, which we have not asked for or sought approval for a duplex, which in my mind is a very different animal.
Anybody else for the public hearing? Take a motion to close the public hearing? To close the public hearing?
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Welton. Seconded by Councilwoman Carter. Second by Councilwoman Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is not closed. Discussion?
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, you can move first.
Whose lot was that, Ruth?
Stuart, Stuart shares. Corner lot.
Corner lot?
Mm-hmm.
That cor, when was the house taken down? Years ago?
There wasn't a house on that lot. He had corn. Melba Howen, your aunt?
Yeah.
Had one across the street that was removed. But that's the neighborhood I've lived in since I was five.
But that lot has been an eyesore.
And there was the barn on the east side where the condos are.
As far as I'm concerned, I traveled that road because I live up that road. That lot has been an eyesore for years. No one's controlled the weeds until, until just lately. And it's really been an eyesore. I think the fact that he wants to put twin homes, not so much, and they will be owner-occupied, right? Not so much that it would bring in a lot of people, but if there is an, something nice there, it might influence the rest of the neighborhood, and you know where I mean, right?
Not really.
Yes, you do. Clark will, Clark will remind you. You brought up the name.
Oh, the home, oh.
No, I'm talking about Aunt Melba's house.
Yes.
If that is across the street and it's nice, I wouldn't, I would not mind twin homes, especially when they're nice. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Lutton?
I was gonna say, oh, I know who it was, and I found it on your, we're just gonna see how big the lot was on the single-family home.
I might add that our architectural additions exceed the Clayson home in a number of ways and would be an asset to the neighborhood in value and, and the way they're kept.
Is there curb and gutter in that area right now? And so we would end up with curb gutter.
Right. So neither lot, I mean, there is a, there's some, I think, deep ditch here and a really worn-down sidewalk, but yeah, it would, it would upgrade the frontage of both of those corner lots.
Well, I'm, I'm with you. It always makes me a little bit nervous and things like that because you never know what, what people are going to do with them, but the truth is, that exists with any home. You know, anybody could buy a home and they could choose to rent it out, and people will take care of it, they won't take care of it. There's homes all over this town that are, that are nice homes, that are nice homes. And, and so I don't know if that's going to make it any worse with the, at least in my mind, with a, with a twin home where they're both owner-occupied. I feel, I feel better if they're owner-occupied. Most people are, if they're owners, are going to take a little bit more pride in their place of residence, whereas if it's rented, they don't really have that bone to it.
Are we the last to make comments?
Sure, you just have to come back up. Yeah, I'll let you come up.
Okay.
I would rather have a single home, but I, I don't think I can hold it up.
Now, that twin home would not bother where I live, because I'm block away, I'm in the other block, and I'm surrounded by some nice homes. But it's the homes around there that concerns me. It's those neighbors that live there, because I've looked at the condos go downhill, and they were built back in like 1991 when our son was on his mission, and my home is really nice. I love my home. The neighbor lady in that home said, "Oh, you live in the cute home." But I'm concerned about the neighbors up the street. It wouldn't affect me, but I'm concerned about the people that I love up the street that are working on their homes. And so I'm just, I'm, I look at the condos, when I thought about those today, and Clark and I drove around the block and looked at them, the one on the south, she keeps it up. Her parents own it, and she keeps it up. She wanted to stay there, so they built a home up in Layton. But the other two, boy, the backyards have been full of weeds, and they still don't look good. I'd pass them. So that's what I'm concerned about with another multi-unit on that block.
And I agree with you, but it's back to what Els and Welton does, you just can't make people do their yard work the size of this. It's just sad that they don't take pride in their own home, but there's usually one or two in every neighborhood, because I've seen it.
Or three or four.
Or three or four more. I, I think anything we can do to help reunite these neighborhoods is important, and such things as curb and gutter.
Yeah, absolutely, because it's the only way a road is ever going to get better is with curb and gutter.
And the applicant could have proposed a duplex and had rental units, but I think he recognized that at least, you know, having the twin home will support owner-occupied. It doesn't necessarily mean that they will be owner-occupied, but it will provide that option if somebody's wanting to own their unit.
Can you put covenants on just a twin home?
Yeah, because he's requesting an overlay zone test, so that is why we asked him for those standards for the landscaping as well as the design, and so those will be part of the approval.
Okay. Kind of entertaining motion. Everybody's ready? How do you want that done?
Um, let's do separate, let's do the one for the overlay zone first, because if the overlay zone is not approved, then plot A cannot be approved as proposed. So I have them.
We can have a green meeting.
What was that?
We can have a green meeting.
So it is right here. So if you start with plot A, do the RMO1 overlay zone, make a decision on that, and then you could even put the preliminary final plot for A and B together if you'd like, or you could even do three separate motions, if that's easier.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
Flat B also, that house has been kept up, kind of. Somebody got in there and fixed it up good. Was it you?
No, it's the Jake Barker.
Okay.
Prior owner.
Okay. Somebody moved, yeah, somebody fixed that up, and it looks 100% better. But how much better will that whole block look with the new house behind? Those buildings are, and you should know that because you live across the street, are just an eyesore, and it would be great to have curb and gutter all the way down that road. Do you have curb and gutter?
Mm-hmm.
And then you'd want to put curb and gutter in.
Yeah.
Okay. There you go, Clark. She said yes.
That's just siding the garage.
Okay.
Down the road.
All right.
Where are you going? You're out of road.
Oh, I know.
You ought to go make a motion here, Linda.
Well, I get real tongue-tied, but I make a motion that we accept the RMO1 zone, overlay zone, that we approve that, and also the preliminary plan and find, for the final plot, for Plan B.
Do you want, do you want staff conditions to be part of that?
Yes, please, with staff conditions.
Motion by Councilwoman Carter.
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Hardy. Deal?
Just clarification. So preliminary final for both A and?
And B.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Does that need to be my item, there?
Yes. Well, let's do that again, then. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
By the way, I like the, the infill. I'm glad that you're, you're working in our community. I'd like to do a lot of them. There's, there's a lot of areas that just are weeds and. I'd like to do a lot. Firework season, there, there are fire hazards and. I was a little surprised, and I, we've met with literally 25 families to make sure that this meeting went smoothly. We believe in doing things the right way. I appreciate that, too. Thank you.
Could I bring you a list about the property?
Hey, in our DRC meeting, our chief of police offered a list of properties, and I'm still waiting on that.
I haven't had time to get it.
I know you're busy. I heard a number of citations. But yes, if you have a list of properties, I will, I will personally go talk to them.
Great. I'm gonna do it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. No, we're up to resolution on the amendments to the Payson City fee schedule.
Is this just a follow-up to what we talked about the other week?
It is. So hopefully by sending out that other spreadsheet that Kim spent a lot of time on, hopefully that clarifies, you know, some questions that maybe you had, pardon, to that last meeting. So staff is just requesting approval to amend the fee schedule to update the development fees.
I'm very comfortable making a motion to update those fees on the fee schedule as proposed.
Seven five one seven? Eight? I guess we got a few there.
You don't have to do anything.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Hardy?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilwoman Carter? All in favor?
Aye.
Is that a roll call? Roll.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now to item four, interlocal cooperation agreement with Utah County regarding substance abuse.
Here from Tim and the city council. This is actually two things. So the first one is our interlocal agreement, and it actually provides funding from my position, part of the funding, and gives us $3,000 of capacity building money. And so for those of you who don't know, my position has been around for six, maybe seven years. And the reason the county brought this program in is because of the SHARP survey that's taken every two years in school. Our SHARP survey was showing some use rates that were alarmingly high in our area, and they felt like the way to do prevention is to get into a community with someone who lives here, and we decide how we do our own prevention following the communities that care model. It's an evidence-based model, and we also bring in our parenting program, we do our minor recognition awards, we rent instrumental in our drop box here, we do our alcohol compliance checks, and we also do our prescription review documents, and any other things that we see in ways that we can improve our community and bring in things for our youth so that they have good things to do and not want to participate in substance abuse. So that's the first thing, and it should be in your package if you have any questions on that contract with the county. And they're committed to continuing this. This is how they want to handle their prevention, is to have a program like ours in every community. They feel like we handle our own problems best in our own communities with community-based people.
Would you elaborate on evidence-based programs? I, I think that's very interesting to have everybody understand what that means.
Um, when you have an evidence-based program, they have to go through rigorous things in order to show that their program is effective, and usually it takes years and years of presenting the program and having surveys to find out whether it actually is effective or not. And usually they go through some sort of a national program like SPAMSHA. Originally, the University of Washington presented this program. They did pilot programs. To Willa was one of them, which is a highly successful communities that care. I, I can't remember all of the cities and towns that they had pilot programs in, but they had them, I think, in Washington, in Utah, and a few of the other surrounding states. And so this was a long-term program that showed whether this type of a prevention program was even effective in the community. When you go to the doctor with like heart issues, there's evidence-based procedures that they follow. Are you following a diet that is heart-healthy? Are you exercising? Are you smoking? Those are evidence-based practices that your doctor says, "If you do these things, we know they work." And so this is the same with this program. It's been shown to be effective, highly effective, in reducing substance abuse in communities. And so that's the reason, the, the actual state has picked up this model pretty much throughout the whole state. So you'll see a lot of our programs, they either follow what is called the SPIF program or communities that care, which are all evidence-based programs in prevention for, for substance abuse. And so this isn't just a program they've brought in willy-nilly, and they, they, they're putting their money where their mouth is. They, they will continue to support our communities with money, and they paid personally for me to go to tons of trainings, and I just went to Bryce for a three-day training. They picked up the bill for everything, including my mileage. So that was, and so they continue to provide training so that we actually understand what we're doing and, and try to put on the best program that we can. And so right now, in Utah County, there's one here in Payson, when we cover Santa Congoshin, June Nola, Eagle Mountain, Saratoga has one, Springville had one, they've kind of pulled away, but I have to say, our, our program is, is a very highly successful program. Did that explain what evidence-based is?
Yeah, I, I was agreeing with it. I just wanted to make sure that.
Oh, that everybody understood what an evidence-based program is?
Yeah, because my wife is involved in a similar type thing in the county, so.
Okay. And Provo City is doing one right now.
So have you seen it drop in in substance use in your?
We're, we're seeing a slow decline, and our, our new SHARP survey comes out in October, and we'll look. Some of the risk factors have changed. Low commitment to school has always been a high-risk factor for our community. I'm not sure why. And so we, I'm going to get with Donna, and we're going to write a grant that we hope will get approved. The state at this conference in Bryce offered a 10,000, up to a $10,000 grant, so we are going to use it to maybe improve the library, the teen space, for kids to go for a safe spot to do homework. And anyway, we're going to get together, they've given us a really short prime line, it's due by Monday, and we're going to get together and, and write it. It's not a hard grant, but we feel like low commitment to school is very important. We don't want to see that. We also, pro-social activities with their peers, that would cover a low protective factor that we have, so if we can bring that money into our community and improve our library and have a space for kids who maybe don't have computers or laptops to come do homework, have a quiet space, or, and your teen librarians had some great ideas of things that you're, that kids could do for clubs and come there. We don't have a lot of places for teens to go and do activities, so the spaces that we do have, we want to make really nice in our community. So that's just some of the things that we can do for our community.
Motion for approval or resolution, or denial?
I'm moving that we approve the resolution, that we have the force on communities that care grant, and approve the contract for this next fiscal year.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Hardy. Second. Second by Councilwoman Lutton. Mine, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Um, the next one is the interlocal agreement with Utah County regarding community prevention services and strengthening families program.
Hey, that's also mine. So with our, our community program like this, they offer us money each year to provide another evidence-based program that fits the need of our community, and we go off that SHARP survey again and decide what our risk factors are in our community, what our high-risk factors are, and what our low protective factors are. And so we've brought in strengthening families. It's a evidence-based parenting program that involves the whole family, not only parents, but all of the kids come to this. And so this is our agreement that are a little slow, because we've already actually presented one session of strengthening families, and we're about to start another one in September, but it is a highly successful parenting program. In fact, the court can court order people to come to this, the schools have, in the past, have court ordered people to come to this, and with truancy issues, PCFS has, has court ordered families to come. UCF has, has court-ordered families to come to this, and sometimes when we have a court-ordered family, they're not exactly happy to be there, until they actually participate in our program, and they come for a couple of weeks, and they see the value in it. And some of those very same families want to repeat and come to another one, because they kind of, they start feeding the momentum, and they're like, "Okay, this, this is, this can help our family." And it's, you know, it is, it's great. It was developed out of the University of Utah by Dr. Carol Comper, and it is also an evidence-based program that is all over the country.
Any motion for the resolution?
I'll make the motion, we approve resolution 752017 for the interlocal agreement between the county and Payson City for the community prevention services.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Hardy? Second. Second by Councilwoman Luton. Roll call?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Resolution for agreement with forestry, fire, and state land.
Mayor Portman, councilmember, hopefully you've had a chance to read all that. I think it's a good plan, I think you should assign it and pass it, and we're good to go, right?
That was a quick one.
Yeah. So, just to give you a little brief history, the way that the fire suppression costs have occurred throughout the state for a long time, has been an agreement with the state of Utah and the counties, with, the city's not being able to participate. So, for example, if we had property in Payson City that was, for example, state lands or federal lands, and the fire occurred on those lands, even though they're a state or federal agency, would have had to pay the cost for suppression. Or if the fire started in the city and moved out into the county or federal, would be stuck with the bill, although the county and the state, they, they take the costs except for ours. So, it's a good thing. So, for example, with For Bay, we had a fire start there, right now, it's in the county, and we would have to pay any of the costs, even though we own the land. But once it's in Payson City, we would have to pay a proportion shared under that plan. The new plan, we basically do the initial attack like we always do, and after that, the state picks up the tab. So, it's a good thing. We do have to do a couple of things. We have to do some community education, some prevention activities, and our costs for this year, and it's kind of a guesstimate, because they don't have a 10-year plan to have that history, and our cost is, sorry, $8,587, which we can do in kind services. So, with, with training, preparedness, updating or working on vehicles, equipment, the work we have, we do with, like, for example, the hollow park, Payson Canyon Park, all that, anything that we do, the Parks Department actually does, with removing dead wood, cleaning up vegetation, all counts towards that in-kind service. So, it wouldn't take us long to cover that cost. So, really, nothing out of pocket. So, if we ordered a helicopter or a plane, would've been stuck with the cost models. But now, if we order vehicles in the city, we don't pay anything.
Pretty sure that Ryan Headfire, they'd wish they'd have gotten rid of the dead wood.
Yep. Right. That's a good, good example of why you need to have some logging and clean out the dead wood.
I agree.
So, anyway, it's a good program. It'll take a little bit of work on our parks, tractings, and do some community education. In 2019, we'll have to put together a community wildlife prevention plan that we'll work with. We have a few areas, we have the wildlife and urban interface, but we can, need to work on that. So, any questions?
Linda, would you like to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the agreement with the forestry and fire and state lands.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Hardy?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hardy. Roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, resolution for administrative services agreement with ICMA Retirement Corporation.
A few months ago, we came and had NFP, and introduced a grant with NFP to have them go work with ICMA to help reduce some of the fees that would be charged for our retirement plans with the city. And they were successful in negotiating that rate down, so this, the agreement will amend the rate that we're paying to ICMA, and also set up some other structural accounts that we need to manage this.
Discussion? Any motion for the resolution?
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution 752017, approve an agreement with ICMA, or ICMA Retirement Corporation.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Hardy? Second. Second by Councilwoman Luton. Roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Would you like to strike the double? Like that. Motion to adjourn?
I make that motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's 47.